Welcome to the four o'clock work session of the Bollering Board of Commissioners for March 19th, 2013. We only have one item on the agenda today, which is the discussion of the actuarial report for the Closed Police and Firefighter Retirement Fund, closed in 1988. Is that right, '88? That handles those people who retired prior to us joining the county employees retirement system. This information has been provided, unlike in many previous years, to the entire Board of Commissioners, and that's one reason why we're discussing it today. Mr. Febo.
Yeah. Mary, that was a good introduction. This is an issue that we've been facing for some time, how the best to handle an adjustment, if we were going to provide one for cost of living, as well as how to keep the fund sound. We've done this actuarial, and Jeff's going to present to you the findings to help foment discussion about those particular central issues. Jeff?
Thank you, Kevin. What I thought I would do is go through just kind of the highlights of the report. The report is as of January 1st, 2013. Forgive me for jumping back and forth. Let me see if I can get this mouse to work here.
While you're doing that, I'll just notify or let everybody know that we have representatives from the retirees group, New Whalen, Bill Chaney, and Mike Sears have joined us today, as well as our financial managers, Bob Kirby. Glad to have you here. And Mike Jefferson, too. I'm sorry, what? Thanks. Go ahead.
Thank you for doing that. I was getting ready to call, notice them in the audience. Okay. This is a pretty good summary here, and this is on page three of your report, your hard copy. 2012, calendar year, finished at a 9.64% return on assets. That's right here. The market value of those assets as of the end of 2012 was $7,296,133. And as you can see, it was, we stayed pretty level with where we finished the prior year as far as the assets. And this fund pays out roughly $950 million a year in benefits. So with a $7 million asset balance, I would give kudos to Mr. Kirby and Mr. Jefferson for their work that they did on protecting that, those assets, and holding those up. So the 9.6, I think this fund roughly runs about 40%. We're able to do equities in this fund, about around 40% mutual funds. So that helps it as far as its return. And then the rest, I think, are bonds and some money markets, things like that. But anyway, finished 9.6, which got us to the $7,296. At a 0% COLA, present value of the benefits to be paid out in the future would be 8.5 million compared to the 7.2 or 7.3 in assets. And then at a 3% annual COLA, projected benefits would be about 10.6 million compared to the 7.3 million in assets. It's what that's showing right there. The city made a contribution of $400,000 again during 2012. And 2% COLA was given last August, 2012. And that pretty much summarizes what happened. Here's the rules on, from the KRS, on the cost of livings, not to exceed 5%. And it recommends you go by the All Items Index on the Consumer Price Index, which was 1.7, I think, at the end of 2012. The next page, going to page five, I think it is, is kind of the summary of the provisions of the plan, explains how the death benefits work, all the different rules of the game there. I won't get into that. I'll let you read that if you want to. Talks about the minimum benefits there at the bottom. Here's the actuarial assumptions that are used on the valuation. And these are basically the mortality rates. And what this says is, out of a sample of 1,000 lives, if you took a sample of 1,025-year-olds, just under one of those 25-year-olds would be projected to die. So .66 is a .66 of a life. That's not hardly one life, but it's almost one life. When you get to 55, though, on average, if you took a sample of 1,055-year-olds, this is saying a little over four of those would die. You get to the disabled lives, as you can see, that goes up. Disabled 25-year-old out of 1,000, nine of those would pass away, and so on. So that's what that's saying there. I confirmed that with the actuarial earlier today, that's what that meant. We use a 6% per annum rate of return, investment, rate of investment return that we're going to assume we get. And I'll show you, I think it's on this next page. Actually, this is the balance sheet, kind of the breakdown of the assets. But I'll show you just the second, the three, four, five, six-year average returns. But this is, again, showing that 7.3 million in assets that we finished the year with market value. Here's kind of the cash flows as they happen. We started January of '12 with $7,202,376. The city put in $400,000. Investments made $656,000, which got us to $1,556 in cash in. And then we paid out $943 in benefits. Actuarial study was $5,000. A trustee fees of $8,000. Audit was about $5,900. So total cash out was $962, which got us to the $7,296. Here we go. Here's the investment returns. There's the 9.64 last year. The year before was 4.23. Here's where the market crashed, '08. Mr. Kirby, Mr. Jefferson did a good job of recovering that money in '09, getting that back, so we got a net zero those two years. But here's your averages. Six-year average was 4.4 and 1/2%. Five-year average was around 4%. Four is 8.3. Three-year was 7.2, and so on. Here's the schedule we usually look at here as far as the funding goes. We like to stay, keep an eye on this 15-year amortization. So something between a 0% COLA and a 3% COLA going forward. The city would need to fund somewhere between these two numbers to stay on track, to knock out these two numbers. Here's the unfunded liability. At 0% was $1,247. And at 3% COLAs, it would be about $3.3 million. That's with the interest, I believe, included.
Does that 3% column indicate 3% every year, or just 3% for the next year?
This is a 3% snapshot in time, as of January 1st, 2013, assuming a 6% return, assuming the mortality tables hold up, and assuming 3% every year from here on out.
3% every year, okay.
Not just the one year. That's every year. That's how much your projected benefits increase, by belief. Or that's the liability. That's your increase on your liability. You go from a 1.2 to a 3.3 by giving 3% every year from here on out. If that makes any sense?
Yes.
So here's the amortization. We like to try to stay on track with here, around the 15- or 20-year amortization figures. Here's a summary of our funding progress. This is required, that they put in there. It's, I guess, the 25 requirement. This goes all the way back to '96. And back in '96, all the way through 2006, or maybe 2000, I think it was 2004, we used to have an 8% assumption rate on the investments, which around 2004, we got to looking at that and thought that was not very reasonable. So we made the actuarial. I think at the time, we switched actuarials, too. But we made the new one pick up with a 6% return. So as you can see, the big swing from '02 to '04, this is overfunding. We were actually $991,000 to the good. And then we went from that to underfunding of $623,000. And since then, it's kind of been of a roller coaster. But you see, '09, we really took a hit. We went from a million to about $2.3 million unfunded from '08 to '09 with that stock market hit. We recovered somewhat in '10, recovered more in '11. And then from '11 to '12, we kind of took a step back. We went from the 1.4 million to 1.6. And then this past year, we recovered again somewhat to $1,247. This is all assuming no future cost of living adjustments. So we get to 85.4% funded ratio. The bottom part here is the same scenario, only assuming a 3% annual cost of living for the future every year. And you go from an 85% funding ratio to 68.8%. You go from a 1.2 million unfunded to a 3.3 million unfunded. And again, this is your value of your assets here in the first column, and this is your projected benefit payout in the second column. So this column minus this column pretty much gives you your unfunded liability amount. Any questions on this slide? This is just some participant data showing our participants. We had 22 retirees as of January 1st, with 23 beneficiaries, for a total of 45 participants. Average age was 75.24 for the retirees and 75.44 for the beneficiaries. And here's your annual benefit payments. This is per person. Per the 22, average is about $24,000 per year. And then this gives you kind of a distribution of your ages by groups. That's on page 12. And then here's your projected benefits from 2013 all the way out to 2047, sorry. First column is assuming a 0% COLA going forward, and the next column is assuming a 3% COLA. So we didn't figure any difference for this current year. It just showed the same. But going forward, you can see the difference in the two numbers annually. This next column just gives you all of the payouts for the participants. And I think that's it for that report. Any questions on that? The next thing I have is kind of an Excel spreadsheet that the actuary prepared for us, where we can plug in different scenarios on the COLA. We can plug in different scenarios on the city's contribution, whatever you want to do, whatever you want to look at. And then here's your expected benefits. Again, those same numbers you would see in your report at the 0% COLA level. Here's another tab that I prepared with a 5% return, if you wanted to be more conservative with the rate of return. So I'll leave the floor open for discussion. But we wanted to come back to you guys. You said you wanted to see the actuarial report. When we got it in, I was able to get it a little bit earlier this year. And here we are, we're in the process of budget, kind of looking for some direction on funding and all these other things of that nature.
Any questions for Mr. Harman?
I have one.
Yeah?
If we went with a 1.7%, what would that indicate?
Did a 1.7%, assuming that we didn't give any more contributions, the fund would be projected to run out in 2024, going to the negative. And as you plug in contributions here, for example, let's say we give it another...
Plug in $400,000.
$400,000.
The amount that we put in it last year.
That extends the life another year. As you can see, it goes from 2024 to 2025. So every year we put money in, it basically extends the life another year. And that's assuming you get 6% on your money, and it's assuming 1.7% every year.
Every year. Well, my thought was, we've had some discussions that instead of doing a, is providing this fund whatever the city employees would get. For instance, if this year it's a 1.7, then we would plug in for this fund a 1.7% increase. Next year, if it's a 2%, we'd plug in the same thing. If it's 1.5, we would plug in the same thing. And I know that we can't commit future commissions, obviously, to what we do here.
I went ahead and...
But that was my thinking.
Sorry to interrupt. Here's your 20-year average on your CPI and your 30-year average on your CPI, which is your COLA. So just additional information.
Jeff, can you do $200,000?
How many years do you want to go?
Same as what Bill asked you, whatever that was. $200,000?
Yeah, that gets you part of another year. But it take, you pretty much get to, what I looked at is 2031 is 2032, kind of your magic year, where our annual contribution would cover the annual benefit payments?
How much would that be?
Well, this is assuming a 1.7% COLA going forward. If we're given, if the city can, you know, of course, you'd have more buildup, though. But if you had $400,000 every single year, you'd go way out. But basically, if you all decided to take, you know, to take a break, or whatever you want to call it, you're basically looking at around 2030, 2032, where you'd get down to that $400,000 level on the benefits. Right now, it's, as you can see, right now, we're still up in the $900,000 range.
And this is a way of explanation, this fund, or this pension plan does not provide any health, any other benefits other than the...
Right. That's right.
And obviously, it's a closed pension, where no one else will be involved in it other than the ones that are in the house.
That's right.
Yes, sir. At risk of being ignorant, are all the factors the same, or they weighted differently? For example, the rate of return vis-à-vis the COLA, vis-à-vis the amount of contribution? Does one factor have a greater impact than the other? Are they all independent factors? They're not weighted, right?
I think it's...
For example, if you have a lower rate of return, does that hurt you more, hurt the fund more than if we kicked up the contribution? Are the values weighted? Again, I preamble this by maybe being ignorant.
Well, a 6% return on $7 million is $420,000 versus a $400,000 contribution. It's, right now, it's pretty close to the same. But as we get down to, say, a $5 million fund balance, a 6% return would be $300,000 versus, then your city contribution is more than your assumed returns.
So there's internal calculus to each one of these parameters.
Right. It has a lot to do, and I'll let Barbara Mack step up here anytime you want to bail me out, but I think it has a lot to do with the asset value, liquidity, how much they can turn over to be able to make those benefit payments. So you might want to let them speak to what the cash contribution by the city does for them, to help them out, and what they do all year round.
In terms of volatility, the most volatile is the rate of return.
I think so. So, y'all have anything to add to that?
This is Mike Jefferson with Hilliard Lines.
Mike Jefferson, Hilliard Lines. The city's contribution, as you can see from these slides and looking through the actuarial study, covers roughly 40% of the cash flow out to the plan beneficiaries. So any reduction in the contribution would constrict the plan's cash flow, which would in turn require us to take an even more conservative investment position within the plan, to try to reduce that return volatility. So it's, the city's contribution is an important part of what we're doing, why we hope to be able to achieve the 6% return. If we reduce our cash flow, whether it's from interest rates continuing to stay low, which would reduce the income that we receive from our bond portfolio, or if the city's contribution is reduced, then that would have a negative effect on the cash flow. We would have to come increasingly more conservative.
If I may?
Sure.
Mike, if I'm understanding, you say it's the 40% of the payments now?
Roughly.
Or would be, about 40%. As the number of beneficiaries decreased, then that would increase that percentage more? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, presumably.
Okay.
Yes.
Say that again.
So, I don't know if I can. I'm gonna try. If the 40% that you're saying that our contributions pay for now is the number of beneficiaries reduced, then that 40% becomes 45%, 50%? Is there a correlation between the...
Well, there's a correlation. And on the other side of the coin, you have the, over time, as you can see, the plan is designed by its very nature to, the plan balances, is designed to decline. So you've got both those. While the number of beneficiaries would be declining, the plan value itself would be declining as well.
Okay. Hence the purpose of an actuarial study.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make sure we're on track.
Okay.
Does that, did that answer you?
Yeah. I'm thinking that the COLA is most benign of the factors. It's what we put into the plan every year that's critical. If you got 12% return, we wouldn't be demanded to put as much in, right? To make it balance.
That's correct.
Okay. So the volatility is in the rate of return. Do you think 6% is a valid assumption, or you think that's low or high?
Well...
I know this, the stock market's gambling.
This isn't like to make predictions. I categorically don't make predictions. But I would say that over the last five years, we haven't achieved...
You haven't?
We haven't. You could see that from the actuarial study. And you can say, well, we had one really bad, unusually bad year. But the fact of the matter is, we haven't done it in the last five years. And today, interest rates are lower than they were five years ago. And so it becomes an increasing challenge as interest rates stay as low as they are. It's great for borrowers, it's hard for savers, it's hard for folks, entities, pension funds, retirees that need to draw income from those assets. So it's a challenge.
Thank you. Do you have any more questions for Mr. Jefferson?
No.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Just as a way of discussion, or at least putting something out, what I would like to see is us to maintain our $400,000 that we did last year, which is still a drop from the previous years by, I don't know, it was 410 one year, 450 one year. But I know last year was $400,000. And to have the cost of living be what the city employees are projected, if it passes a 1.7% is what I'd like to see.
Mr. Harmon, you gave us a memo regarding the program and the statute requirements for us to deal with this. You know, I know we're kind of out of order. It goes to the board and then to the commission, but we're planning for budget, we'll at least have some direction to go here. But would you mind touching base with that? I've read it, and I want to make sure I understand.
Well, I think there's a couple of things, a couple of different statutes that you can look at. This is a main statute, of course, in Chapter 96, that establishes the plan. When you read those statutes, I think to me, it's fairly clear that contemplate that the first decision-maker on a COLA, cost-of-living increase, is the pension board of trustees. Now, when you read the language, it seems to say that they cannot approve a cost-of-living increase unless that cost-of-living increase is actually sound. The statute doesn't redefine what actually sound means. But I think if you look at other things, at least you can contemplate that it means there's enough money in the system to pay out all the benefits over the lifetime of the system. I don't think anybody here would agree or think that this pension plan is actually sound right now, even probably with no COLAs. And I don't think, from what the numbers, Jeff, tell me if I'm wrong, that if you gave no COLAs right now through remainder of the term of this program, that there's not enough money in there now to pay out through the actuarial study. And of course, when you put cost-of-living increases into it, that makes that number even higher and harder to achieve. So when you read statutes, I think the, you know, it's really incumbent on the board, if they're going to do a cost of board trustees, if they're going to recommend a cost of living, you know, you read the language, it says almost to me that they can't do it unless they can make a determination that's actually sound, or the actuarial makes that determination. Now, there was some statuteary changes a couple of years ago in the General Assembly, that they came in and said, okay, even the board says, we can't do it because it's not actually sound. With the new language, the Board of Commissioners, not to get all the boards confused, but the Board of Commissioners can now override that decision. And they can recommend a cost-of-living increase any year, even if it is not actually sound to do so. And I think probably that's what we did, partly did last year. The board, basically, I think if I remember right, the board trustees made kind of a 2-2 non-decision, and the Board of Commissioners then came in and approved the cost-of-living increase, and you put money in. There's a second statute in Chapter 65, 65.156, that also has some language that seems to say, at least to me, and again, I let other people address this wealth and want, that once you have a program, this pension plan, that is a closed plan, no new money coming into it, the only thing, money you're getting is the interest return or the investment returns, plus whatever the city gets into it. That's incumbent upon the city to, on an annual basis, appropriate money and put money into that plan that the actuarial says is necessary to pay off the benefits over time. I'm not too sure whether we have actually ever met that number. I think we're on a 15-year payment plan. At one time, a few years ago, I think the city decided that we'd go on and embark on a 15-year payment plan with a $400,000 or $450,000 figure, where we used at the time, with the understanding that probably by the time that this plan was the end, that there would be sufficient money to pay into it. And I think that was also based on a probably 3% COLA, if I'm not mistaken. But, you know, I guess a couple of things. Issue one is, you know, who approves the COLA? I think the board has, the board trustees has a real problem about approving a COLA with this program not being actually sound. The Board of Commissioners has the ability to override that. The secondary issue following that, though, is regardless of whether it's a cost of living every year, you know, what's incumbent upon this Board of Commissioners to put into this program, to keep it on some kind of actually sound basis. And of course, that number's going to depend on what kind of COLAs you approve every year, because that's going to affect the actuarial study, and it's going to impact how much money you've got to put in over time. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Do you have any questions for Mr. Harmon on that?
Do you have any questions for Mr. Harmon on that? I guess before I get any other questions, Mike or Cat or Gene, do y'all have any comments that you'd like to make? You don't have to, I'm just offering you that opportunity if you want. Nope. Okay. And I made my comments clear from last year that when the fund is actually sound, I don't feel it's incumbent on the city to make the fund any less sound by granting cost of living increases under the state retirement system. Those have been suspended as well. I know that my opinion is different than others on the board. I would not mind seeing us contending to contribute to the point to make it an actuarial sound basis, and then at that point, look at whether or not we can afford to provide a cost of living increase. This plan was designed as a, and Mr. Kirby, you tell me if I'm wrong here, this plan was designed as a straight line annuity. When you retire, that's the amount of money that you got, just like in the private sector, what an annuity is. We've been fortunate in that we've been able to provide cost of living increases over many years. But that was not the promise that we made at the time that they were given in order to make sure that there's sufficient funds for the remainder of the retirees, I believe it's incumbent on the city, to at least suspend them for a period of time till we can catch up. And if it's 1.2 or 1.25 million that we're behind, presuming that we make 6%, about three years, we can catch up and then take a look at increases at that point. But that's just my opinion. You're looking for direction on what to plan on for?
Yes.
Budget processes at this point, that I think from a budgetary standpoint, Billy and I are not different. If you're looking for longer term, so we don't have the discussion again the rest of this year, that's where I stand.
Well, there are strategies.
Anybody else have any comments that they'd like to bring up?
Well, this is the strategy.
From my understanding correctly, you would be in favor of the city contributing, say, $400,000?
Mm-hmm.
But no cost of living?
You're right. We can look at that when we get caught up. That's what, you know, it's hard, because, I mean, I guess that's why we're paid the big bucks to make decisions, but it's hard to look at people you've worked with in the eye and tell them that you can't provide a cost of living at this time. But my judgment is, in order to make sure that the fund is available throughout the remainder of the term of the pension, that we gotta catch up, because we're only at 85%.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Jeff or Mr. Kirby, on page nine of the actuarial report, there seems to be a strategy about how to reduce or target the unfunded liability. Is that correct? There's five, 10, 15, and 20. Am I misreading that?
Right.
Can you interpret that in words, what those numbers mean, please?
I think Kevin's referring to these numbers. This is the annual contribution needed to amortize unfunded liability within five, 10, 15, and 20 years, assuming either 0% COLAs or 3% COLAs. So if you really wanted to knock out the $1,247, $357 at the zero COLA, it's going to take you 15 years if you only paid in $128,431 every single year. So, versus if it's a 3% COLA, you're going to have to pay in $341,15 every year for the next 15 years to catch up to this $3,312 number. The problem is, I don't know if it's a problem or not, but these are moving targets every single year. We're not locked in on these two targets. Next year, this could be more or less, this could be more, I mean, they could be up or down, depending on our rate of return, depending on your mortality rates, all that kind of stuff. So it's a moving target every year, but we try to stay, like we said earlier, somewhere in this 15-year range, where at least we're chipping away at this unfunded liability. What happens is, if I can find it, let's say, look at, let's look at, say, 2011 year. We only made 4.23%. And, where is it? Nobody get dizzy here, hang on. We only made 4.23%. So you see what happened to our unfunded liability? And I forget what COLA we gave that year, but we went backwards. So we went from one point, this is even at a 0% COLA assumption, we went from a 1.4 to 1.6. We lost basically $180,000, $188,000 there, ground on our funding. So I guess what I'd like to see is some kind of win-win solution, is where when the city puts in money, we're making some big-time progress on this unfunded liability. If we're putting money in and we're not making up any ground, we're spinning our wheels, you know, and a lot of that may relate to the rate of return on the investments, but we gotta find some middle ground where we're chipping away at this unfunded liability, because we're still, seven years later, we're no better off than we were. Here's 2006, of course, that's the middle of the year, but 2006, we were at $1,114, and we're still at $1,247 unfunded. And something we don't want to lose in all this discussion is, the city is ultimately responsible for this fund. So no matter what happens, Katie, are you listening? No matter what happens, the city is going to take care of these retirees and beneficiaries, where we have to, we pay as we go, or we have investments still, or assets still left to do it. It's our responsibility, and I think we're, everybody in this room is, knows that and is committed to that. But I would just like to see us make faster, more aggressive progress on this figure here. And I really don't think you can do that if you're going to keep giving 2% COLAs or better. It's like the mayor said, I think you have to look at maybe trying to catch this number up first and getting this to, say, 100% before we start considering, you know, COLAs kind of thing. It's a tough call.
Jeff, do you have a calculator that shows if we continue to do 400K and had the same level of progress, how many years it would take to reach 100% or near 100% on the funding ratio? Do you have it?
You want to assume 6%?
Should be three years.
Yeah.
Three years.
How many?
Should be about three.
Three years, okay.
Okay.
If five years is at 296...
Yeah, I didn't see it.
Assuming you get 6%.
Yeah, presuming all else stays the same.
Assuming everything else.
Presuming Mac and Mr. Kirby are out there. They put you on the corner with a bucket.
I think it would take a little bit longer for them to cash one out of the plan.
Even at 400,000?
I was going on the assumption here that's in the study that says 200, five years at 296,000.
I don't know if I can do that on this spreadsheet here. I don't have the decline, or I don't have the total liability. We've got asset value declining, but I don't have these expected benefit payments declining balance on that, where you can match them up. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, I will say, since 1997, the city has contributed, this is including this most recent contribution of $400,000 in this current fiscal year, FY13, that we made in December. City has contributed since 1997, $3,711,000 over those 16 years. So...
2013, yeah.
So yet, we still have that $1,200,000 unfunded liability. So that's kind of what I'm talking about, where we're not, we're not catching up. So...
I don't know, is there any record, or has it ever happened where these retirees have received a cost of living raise and our city employees did not? Do we know that?
I've got a history here of the cost of livings, but I don't have a history of the city employee cost of livings. Katie may be able to remember, but here's the CPI, the last, over the years that we go by, that the governors, what's it called, local?
That's the raise.
DLG, yes, is the, what we target. So I think in '09, with this .1, we may have given a .5, and then a year before, we didn't give quite that 4.1, we gave something less than that. So, anyway, as you can see, COLAs have been given in this fund. From the records we have, I think every year, I don't see any years that we missed.
So am I reading this correctly, on the right-hand column, those low numbers, if our city employees received cost of living, that's what that number, that's what it would have been?
Starting in about...
Could be less than that.
Could be less.
Yes.
It was at that or less?
'08, we did less than a 4.1.
I know we did, yeah.
Yeah. But we made up a little bit of that the next year, when it was a .1, we gave a .5.
But then our retirees got, what is that other, 1.8 or 1.0?
They got 1.8 in 2009, 2.7, 10, 2.5 and 11, and 2.2% last year. So, but this is your CPI. And like I said, over, the 20-year average of the CPI was about a 2.44%.
But also remember, the CPI only started for city raises in about 2006?
Yeah, I think we started doing that back when Kevin came.
Before that was tied. Before that, city raises were not tied to any kind of figure like that, so...
Somebody pulled him out of a hat, I guess, or something.
Well, it's obvious, or at least to me, that the most important thing is to protect the integrity of the base fund. And we've got to do what we can to keep that aside from the COLA issue.
Anything else you all want to see on these different scenarios here?
No, not really, not really from you, Jeff. I guess just a couple comments, off the top of the mouth that the city put in there. And...
If you could add one thing?
You know, Mr. Kirby?
About Kirby, I just wanted to add, as you can imagine, the difficulty in investing a plan like this, where in a normal situation, you would have, every pay period, you would have employee contributions, employer contributions, and you'd have an active retirement plan. Here, the only contribution to it at all is what the city's been making, and basically that's been to amortize that unfunded liability over an extended period of time, 15 years. Here, in theory, the day the last member of this plan dies, he would have been handed a check for the last dollar in this plan. So it's smaller and smaller and smaller, and the smaller it gets, the more difficult it is to invest. In a typical retirement plan, it would not be unusual to see 70% or more in the stock market, or 40. And in my opinion, that's plenty high in this type of a plan. Example, in 2008, '09 period, the market lost on 60% of its value. We lost 11. And the next year, we recovered the 11. But here, as time goes on, you can't put all of these funds in long-term bonds in order to get highest interest rate, because it's just a matter of time. We're going to have to start selling assets to meet the monthly payout requirement. The monthly payout's running some $81,000, $82,000. So to complicate things, as every year goes by and the plan gets smaller and smaller, we're going to be confronted with the situation where you're tied up in long bonds and these interest rates pop back up, which surely they're going to do, then you're going to take a bath on these long bonds. You're going to get killed. So we try to stay intermediate at most, where that won't happen. We've had a five-year period of extremely low interest rates. Thing helped us last year on the 9.6% return. We had a good stock market, and we had falling interest rates, which pushed up the value of our bonds. So we had a double benefit last year. I've quit using the term never and always, but I'll be surprised if you see 9.6% return on this plan again, for the reasons I just stated. So it's a catch-22 situation. Imagine down the road when this plan's $2 million. What are you invested in? To meet that monthly? Because it won't be $80,000 at that time either. At some point out here, this thing will eventually turn. But you know, take the situation here. We've lost two members since our January meeting. Both are survived by spouses. Changing the plan is a few hundred bucks. So it's not just retirees, it's the survivors as well, that we have to be concerned about. But I just, there'll be a lot of questions, and some people's mind, why are you only 40% in stock? Go back to '08 and '09, and we'd be talking about some different numbers today. I know the last time the actuary was here, Jeff, I don't know, that's been, what, six, seven years ago? I asked him, I said, "In your opinion, for this type plan, is that too much or not enough in the stock market?" He said, "Too much."
Too much? Too volatile.
So, you know, it's a, in my opinion, when we, my recommendation will be, when we have to start backing off, a good part of that, my recommendation will be to start reducing that stock exposure. And there again, we wouldn't have the 9.6% return we had last year, had we not had at least the 40% in the stock market.
Do you see, can I ask a question?
Do you see us facing the need in the immediate future, within the next five years, having to put more than $400,000 like we've been doing?
I'm sorry, I have a hearing.
I can't relate. Do you think we'll need to put more than $400,000 in the next couple of years? We've been putting about $400,000, right, over the last couple of years? Is that demand going to grow mathematically to increase that dramatically in the next five years?
Basically, what's happening, the $400,000 is making five of the 12 monthly payments.
Okay. So that's what I'm saying. Eventually, we're going to have to kick that up to a higher amount just to make the benefit payment, as the amount of principal reduces.
Yeah.
Right? Because we're not getting as much on return.
And you know, where are these plans? This is a defined benefit plan. There aren't many left. Most of them governmental plans. The ones that are in deep, deep trouble, which is most of them across the United States, including states, they're still using ridiculous return assumptions. We could get rid of this unfunded liability in a heartbeat, by jacking that return assumption up. But all you're doing is delaying the inevitable. Don't come in on the back end. And we basically ordered the actuary to drop that assumption from 7.5 to 6. And at that point... And at that point, when that happened, when, 2004, at that time, with no COLAs, this plan was a million dollars overfunded. You dropped the assumption from seven and a half to six and bam, million dollar underfunded. So, two things, longevity, return assumption. People living longer, five years of 2% interest rate. 30-year treasury bond today, 3.14. 10th to 10-year bond, under two. Five-year, under one. Now, when you get confronted with a situation where you gotta stay short, you might as well put it in a savings account. It's just been a difficult situation. And you just have to bite the bullet and say, "I'm not going out 25 years because long before that, we'll be selling those bonds to make retirement payments." I've been doing this for 40 years. I've been associated with this plan since 1967. Others have done about a five-year gap in there. Uh, I remember distinctly in 1988, when this plan was split, the active people went under the state plan, the retirees stayed here. I think one active person stayed in this plan. It was roughly $24 million and the actuary determined it was roughly split 50/50. 12 million to Frankfurt, 12 million here. 1988 has been 24 years as of last year, and the miracle of compounding is 3% compounded will double itself in 24 years. So somebody making $15,000 retirement salary in 1988, would've been $30,000 last year with the 3% compounded. So you take people living longer and we've got a period here of low interest rates, um, and a situation where we can't invest like we'd like to.
So you, you, you're saying that you need city contribution for cash flow purposes?
What? That's, to us, that's the only thing it is, is a matter of cash flow and making five of the 12 payments. Without that, of course, what we'd have to do is start raising that money, uh, by selling assets when we had the head. And that's coming anyway.
Which creates a, a cliff sooner for the city if that happens, correct? Right now, you're taking the edge off the cliff by us putting the money in every year.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby.
I do have a couple things. You know, I don't think that, my proposal that I'm being a bad steward of our money, and that may not resonate with all of you, but when you talk about the assumptions, uh, I'm gonna talk in a second about people assumptions or what the responsibility of the city government is. Jeff and I don't mean this, I don't mean this ugly while I'm giving race day, but talking about how much the city's put in, that's not a gift. That's our responsibility to take care of the people that took care of us for many, many years. And it's something that I think that we have the responsibility to do. You know, the assumption is, is that we do have the responsibility, this is a people assumption, that we do have the responsibility to take care of the retirees, that we can afford to fund this plan. Uh, we decide where we spend money, whether we spend it on agency sidewalks or whatever we decide to spend it on. But again, it seems like that, again, and, and I respect, obviously I respect the others' views. And I'm not saying that they're wrong. I'm just saying I think I'm right. Ever how that comes out.
I don't know how that came out.
What would it take if, if say that we have $400,000 that we put in there, what would a 1.7% raise cost us for those 45 people? And put that in in addition to the $400,000, how much would that be? Then we make the decision, again, we have, you know, if we can if we have the money to give employees a 1.7, do we not have the ability to give the retirees 1.7? So you go above that amount?
Jeff, we've talked so much, and that's one question I don't think I've ever asked.
So you would alacard it, so to speak, alacard it, make it a separate issue, make it a separate?
Yes.
Contribution, so to speak. Level invested 400K or more, then make a special payment for, uh, cost of living?
I think 1.7% for FY14 would cost about $15,622 in that one year.
That's, I mean, that seems very reasonable to me. You get what, what Bruce had talked about, about trying to, to, uh, uh, lower that amount, and I don't, I don't disagree with that. And kicking the can down the road is, obviously is not the answer to, to these things either. But it seems like you get both things. You make the decision to give the cost of living increase, and you get the $400,000 to help pay down that, uh, unfunded liability. And if it's, if indeed it's $15,000, and again, every penny is important, and I, I know I'll get some emails on this one. But again, we decide where we, we decide where we spend the money. And when we're talking to these retirees, you know, how are we gonna treat our employees, how we treat our retirees, I think is important. And this, and I don't mean to be ugly about this, but it isn't just all numbers.
Does that take away the compounding factor if you, if he does what Bill says? It takes away the compact, uh, com- compounding factor of adding more to the unfunded liability, does it not? If you alacart the cost of living, Mr. Kirby?
You'd have to alacard it every year, wouldn't you?
Yeah, every year, you would have to do it. And all would be, all that would be volatile would be the rate of return and the actuarial, uh, facts. I think they call this a dismal science, uh, and the, it's pretty dismal.
Yeah, the, the way this thing here is built is, this 1.7% that I just keyed in, that takes it all the way out every year. So I don't know that I could, but the one year, when I changed it from zero to the 1.7.
This number went from 918,000 to 934,000. So that's, that's 15,000 I got figured, so.
But obviously, given every year, it really compounds it, so, but the one year.
If you alacard it every year, does that make a difference? You're not compounding it for 20-some years.
Well, you're, you're still not, the 1.7 you get in FY14 is there forever.
It's still built in, yeah.
Still built in. So, are you, you're not saying like one, you're, you're talking like one-time payments.
You would have to do that every year. That's right, okay.
Hell, yeah, actually you can, but you'd have to, if I understand what the, what the law says, if you're, if you know, if we're gonna-
Like a bonus, a one-time?
Well, the city's legislative body shall have the authority to suspend, reduce, repeal any cost of living adjusted, adjustments approved under this, under this paragraph is what, what your memo indicates. I don't, you know, nobody is, is, uh, trying to think how to, how to say this. No, no one is, is questioning anybody's approach on how to do this, whether there being a spendthrift or being a tightwad, that's, I don't, I don't think even any of us are taking it in that, in that fashion. We're just coming down to the opinion of what's the best approach to protect the retirees. And the question is, does the cost of living protect them better by providing them income that they, uh, would not get? Or does it best protect them from, uh, the fact that the fund would run out? Cause they, you know, technically, I guess they could go back to their original amounts. We don't even do that on, on, uh, widows, even though they only get 50%. They go back to the original amount that the, uh, employee received and then are brought all the way up through all of the, all of the cost of livings, which indicates why Mr. Kirby says it's just a few hundred dollars difference in the, in the thing, so. You know, again, it's just a judgment call, and my judgment is it's best for everybody in the long run to suspend the COLAs until we can get the fund into good shape and understand what yours is as well.
And again, I respect Bruce's, uh, opinion and maybe others. And I respect whatever. That's why we have five people sitting up here. We do have different opinions. And I guess suspending it, you know, there's 45 people in there, and I don't know what's gonna happen to people over the next three years, but it's not gonna help some of them if they don't make it the next three years. And is this an emotional issue? And I guess you could say it isn't somewhat, but to me, it, it's not emotion. It's, it's a part of doing business as a city and what our responsibility is, so. But again, I, and I respect the decisions that are made up here, and that's, as Bruce would say, that's just my opinion.
Yes, ma'am.
After looking at these numbers and these percentages of COLAs given, I was looking through, and if this is correct, 12 of the 20 years where we have percentages listed, the retirees got more than our city employees, people that were currently working. When I went through and counted.
Well, like Jean said, though, we didn't always go by-
Right, you said usually it was less.
Well, we only started taking, or was it, the governor's, the gold COLA. The governor's office of local development started putting it out. I don't know when, but we only started paying attention back in '05 or '06 when all the pay plan study was going on. We kinda committed. Kevin, you might wanna jump in here, but-
Yeah, we voted on it. I remember Mr. Strahl was on the commission. Uh, it might've been 2006, 2007. It was after I first came here, which was, the commission was looking for a, a method to have rationality, how to give a pay increase. And they thought that there's a lot of CPIs out there, why not use the state CPI?
Yeah, from, but from, say, 2005 back, there's no, it could, it could be anything. We, city employees may not have gotten anywhere close to these CPI numbers some years. It's just-
I, I know.
There's no rhyme or reason.
On, there, it was less.
Yeah, there was no rhyme or reason to COLAs back before Kevin got here, basically.
Jeff, the reason, uh,
Well, you were here, Bill.
One of the reasons is that they would take and they would, uh, they would complete their budget and they would see what was left over. And then they would go and use that as a formula for what city employees were paid. So it wasn't, again, they didn't go by any formulas, just what was left over. Then at some point, uh, the, they started moving, cost of living adjustments somewhat toward the front of the budget process instead of at the end of the process. So that's why those figures vary so much.
But never did the, the amount of money exceed the CPI.
You're correct, yeah.
So that, it never did, the amount of increase that city employees received exceed the CPI that's listed in the right-hand column.
Okay.
So your, your comments would be accurate. Any other comments? Looking for, I know, I know Joe's opinion would be the same as Bill's, so we're looking for guidance on on how to do judi- budgeting here.
I guess there's two questions from staff's point of view. Uh, one, how do we attack the unfunded liability without the question of the COLA? Our, our baseline has been 400K, uh, a year. We have to see if we can afford it coming this year, oh, obviously. But assuming we do, do, does the commission want to maintain that 400K level, increase it or decrease it? It may need to be decreased out of necessity. We'll, we have to see what those facts are in the budget, but is there an assumption that we should try to at least do 400K? That would be my opinion.
Yes.
I do not want it to go above 400.
In my opinion, it would be a minimum of 400.
I, I guess the second question, and- Feel like the white stuff in that audience.
I'm sorry?
The second question is one of, uh, a COLA. Can I ask a question, Jeff? Let's say one is making a $1,000 retirement, uh, benefit a month. And in coming year, we say to that employee, "Look, we're gonna give you a one or 2% raise, and that'll be 200 bucks. But understand, that's only a one-time deal, and if, and that's for help out with your living expenses this year, but your real perpetual benefit is $1,000." Is that legally possible? Similar to what Bill was saying, it just doesn't compound every year.
I, I don't, I don't think you can buy, I think Bill mentioned another, Mr. Walker, I don't think we can combine, or buy in future commissions. I mean, you, we can't, this commission can't come in and say, "Well, we're gonna give you 1% this year, but now we're closing it off for future years." The only thing this commission can do is adjust this year.
That's what I'm saying. Basically, a thousand bucks plus $100.
You would have to take it back the next year, I believe, Kevin, as the mayor had-
Yeah, it would all go back to zero.
You'd have to rescind the cost of living, more or less, right?
Didn't we do that with our own employees?
That's what your opinion, what your memo indicates, that we can return it all the way back to what their original draw was.
I don't have a problem. I think it does say you can rescind.
Yes.
I don't have a statute of law. I think it does say you can rescind cost of livings. So I think you do have some ability. But again, that's a future commission doing that, uh, and, and, cause this commission can only do one thing one year at a time.
Exactly what I'm saying.
And Jean made-
Is that, look, the baseline, let's use a thousand buck. A li- baseline payment for someone is $1,000. In 2014, we have a little extra money. We will give the employ, give the retirees a, what is essentially a bonus for you, use to handle bills in the coming fiscal year. Understand, that's not a guarantee for every fiscal year. Your baseline benefit's $1,000. We've used it a couple of times with giving bonuses. I know we have, instead of giving the cost of living with our regular employees. Is that possible? Legally possible? We're not buying any future commission, cause it goes back to $1,000 at the end of one year. And if we have more money, it just doesn't, the new benefit is not $1,200. It's still $1,000 with a bonus.
It's not, it's not exactly COLA then. It's more like a one-time payment.
Yes, to help with the cost of living in that particular year. There's no surety that every year one gets that compounded. It doesn't go from a $1,000 benefit to a $1,200.
Let me look at that. Probably-
I don't know, I just-
Probably camp. Let me look at that issue.
That would help with the compounding problem.
We've done it with our own city employees, when we couldn't afford the cost of living. Somehow we were able to, let's say, extract $50,000 on a one-time payment to employees to help with their costs in that one coming year.
But didn't change base pay?
It didn't change the base pay. But it still has the same effect, that extra $200, let's say, is helpful in paying bills. Money's money.
My, my gut reaction probably would be camp, but I'm gonna look at the statute again on that particular question. Cause that contemplates COLAs and all this kinda stuff, and not a whole lot of address about one-time payments, but I don't know. First blush, I'm not sure why you couldn't do that.
Get an attorney general opinion or something?
Basically approve it and then rescind it at the end of the year. Maybe that's the way to do it or something.
Approve it with a sunset provision.
With the sunset, sunset, yeah.
In terms of hierarchy of employee, uh, priorities, if I'm a retiree, first, I would love to have a COLA, right? Cause that's every year. But if I can't get that, and I can get an extra $200 for one year to help pay bills, wouldn't one take that instead of zero?
That's something we look at.
I don't know.
Sorry.
I'm just gonna see what somebody else said next. If the way I think this is gonna go, I mean, that would be, in my estimation, that'd beat nothing, to what, what you said.
Nothing?
That would beat not doing anything. That would be, I'm just putting it in my Jefferson County education, that'd beat doing nothing.
That would be, or beat?
That would be, that would beat doing nothing, yeah. They'd at least get some, yeah. BEAT.
Oh, beat. Oh.
My Jefferson County education fails me again.
We thought you were just saying that was nothing.
No, 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 no. I'm saying it better than nothing.
Thank you.
It would be better than nothing, i.e. better than nothing. Okay, not beat.
My friends on the commission continue to help me out, and I appreciate it so much.
That's a bowl of green house school.
You know, the other option, obviously, is to get no COLA, use the theory of, let's- You know, the other option, obviously, is to get no COLA, use the theory of, let's knock off the unfunded liability, we're assuming four-hundred K is enough, but as Mac said, that actuarially isn't true. You probably need more than four-hundred K for five years or three years, we're thinking. There's a slight tail there, is there not? Or an alignment that doesn't occur in three years like we think? I don't know. All I know is value-wise, we have to continue to put the four-hundred K, if not more, every year, or we're going to face, I know none of you want to do this, some cliff in the future, where this payment's going to be three million dollars and all of a sudden, we're going to become like the state where we got to issue bonds to pay benefits. That would be not wise.
Well, I think you, we're going to have to keep a close eye on this. Every year, we're going to have to look at where we, where we stand, so that we, we don't step off the edge of that cliff.
Well, that's one reason why I made sure that, you know, I had copies of this, of it, I mean, because I'd never had it before when I was up here.
Yeah, I think if, if we could have a gentleman's, gentleman's agreement to kind of keep an eye on the COLA or keep a lid on it and keep a, more or less, a governor a lid on the city's contribution and somehow meet, meet in the middle somewhere, at least, and make, make a little progress.
And just a side note, we don't do an actuary every year, we do one every other year.
No, we do.
Is it every year now?
It's every January first.
Okay, my fault.
Okay, so the marching orders are four-hundred, if we can...
Or better, if we can or better, right?
And you're going...
No.
Four-hundred? I didn't hear.
I just wanted Max four.
Four-hundred, okay.
That's up to them, that was just mine.
Okay, and you're going to do some research and just send it to us, an email.
I love it.
Any comments, questions?
Only that, and I don't have a clear idea. I would want to see, again, a minimum of four-hundred, but, and Melinda and I are disagreeing on this one, but I guess, see what you all think too, so staff will know. It's one saying a minimum and one saying a maximum.
I think I'm at four-hundred.
I'm, I'm at four-hundred for this year.
Okay, well, that gives the staff an idea. And then the other, are we saying then, what are we saying about the COLA?
I, I, I don't know, I'm just throwing ideas out there, putting more tools in your toolbox to think about. Because we've used that tool of the bonus concept to put more cash into employees' hands for the one coming year, without tying the future commissions or the future city into that payment every year. It's been successful for us.
Well, and again, without being facetious, again, that is better than, than not doing
We had the financial 208, 209, we couldn't afford to give that number Jeff had up there, so we gave a bonus. Then in future years, we made up for it by giving a little slightly higher amount in future years. But we gave, we definitely gave a bonus.
Okay, so, Mayor, what I'm hearing then is, four-hundred thousand would be put in there? And then, what about...
If they can afford it.
If, if, right, four-hundred thousand. And then what are we saying about the, the suggestion that Kevin made about the one-time payment?
That's a new issue to me. I have to look at it when I get some figures or if not, we can do it, so. I think, I think there's a good chance that we can, but I don't mean that we're going to, so.
I just want it all to be on the same page.
I don't want to prolong it, though, for, you know, the people that are trying to make their decisions on budget, both in their personal lives and in the city's life.
Yeah, the COLA, the COLA decision is made at the, the July pension board meeting and it usually gets, goes into effect August of each year.
Well, that's one of the reasons that I wanted to have this talked about this early, so they don't have to find out in August what happened to them in July.
This has been a good discussion, I think, today. We've got some things out.
Yes, ma'am.
Just, since we're on the opposite ends, I'll go on and say this. Based on what I've seen today and heard, I am more in favor of doing the one-time versus a cost of living. That's just where I stand on it, either the one-time or nothing, but I'm not in favor as of right now with the cost of living.
Mayor, would it be appropriate to ask if any of the members had anything to say after hearing our discussion?
Anything else, gentlemen? Okay.
All righty then.
All right. Anything else? There's an opportunity for any other items of discussion that a member of the commission would like to bring forward. Hearing none, we'll return at seven o'clock for a regular meeting.